The application.
All right, welcome to the Tana Mount Desert Planning Board Meeting for February twenty six, twenty twenty five. Welcome aboard. Looking around, we don't have anybody on Zoom joining us yet, but I'll make introductions. And I'll start with myself, William Hanley in chair. We got Tracy Loftus Keller, Vice Chair Anne Dalton, Daniel Burke, Gail Marshall, and Alan Kimmerly. And here we are. So that was item one, call to order. Item two, we had minutes from the twelfth of February.
I make a motion to accept the minutes of the last meeting on the twelfth.
I'll second, I'll second that motion.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? And then I guess we wait till six oh five for the public hearing.
Oh, okay. You're right, six oh five.
Our next regularly scheduled planning board meeting is March twelfth.
I already got my packet.
Mm hmm. You do.
But there's one item on the agenda that night.
Wow, Wayne, can I have you guys sign the checklist? Um, for the Marine structure that Bill was staying from the last meeting on twelve?
Mm hmm.
Since two.
You still probably be able to walk down to the landings?
I'm sure. As long as it's not.
Kind of tough getting there right now.
I haven't really been.
Oh, weeks from now, it probably would be okay. They're not going to open up the game for us.
Well, several.
Oh, yeah.
They they have before. They have opened it up. Yeah. Did you see? Now, it's sometimes people will.
Yes.
Like a new.
They just.
Park in my driveway, walk over. Yeah, well.
That's a little. Do you have a lot of authorization? Was it ready? I do. I don't know. I haven't been there in a long time. I know that there's so much salt.
Even it's not recorded.
I reclaimed my depth today.
Mom.
I just.
It all loosened up and I did the deal.
It's only proof. It's only like the recording isn't, he doesn't.
No, I'm ready to start having pizza parties again.
Of course, not. And I use.
And everybody gets that outdoor. Open and pizza.
But it talks and from the town. They're across.
It's amazing.
Well, that's the one.
No, I thought it was just going across the street to that listation in the.
Yep. I think to the one that goes all the way through.
I didn't notice.
Yep.
All right, six oh five, here we go. Right, item three on the agenda tonight, we have a public hearing and it's six oh five. And the public hearing is at six oh five. And that is the land use zoning ordinance amendments for the twenty twenty five annual town meeting on May sixth, twenty twenty five. And we have Noel Musson here tonight and Noel, I'm gonna turn it over to you. No, yes, yes, thank you.
This was a mountain islander on February sixth and February thirteenth. Oh, this is the Ellsworth American, um, so that. Islander on the sixth and Ellsworth American on the thirteenth.
Fantastic, thank you. All right, now you're on Noel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, so tonight we are here to talk about the last of the proposed changes to the land use ordinance. And this one is related to solar energy systems. Um, I briefly talked about this at last meeting that we had. Um, but this this change creates standards for solar energy systems in land use ordinance. By adding some some allowed uses to section three of the loud uses table and a new section called. Six B twenty three solar energy systems and some definitions. Um, and essentially what it does is creates two different kinds of solar energy systems. Ground mounted solar energy systems and roof mounted solar energy systems. And there are different sizes or scales, if you will, of solar energy systems. There's a small scale, which is basically up to or less than fifteen hundred, fifteen thousand square feet. There's medium scale solar energy systems, which are between fifteen hundred, fifteen thousand square feet and eighty seven thousand one hundred and twenty square feet. And large scale solar energy systems, which are basically over eighty seven thousand one hundred and twenty square feet. So, um, in the allowed uses table, we've created some areas in each of the land use districts where the solar energy system will be allowed. What the summary scenarios are for those solar energy systems. So just to review, um, small scale ground mounted solar energy systems would be allowed in every district except stream protection in the VR three district, which is basically the. Um, and those would be allowed with a conditional use, I mean, a CEO permit. There are solar energy systems, small scale that are roof mounted, and those are allowed everywhere without, um, without a permit. There are, um, the medium scale ground mounted solar energy systems are allowed in the residential one and two district, the shoreline districts and the rural woodland districts with a conditional use permit. The medium scale roof mounted solar energy systems are allowed everywhere, um, with a permit from the CEO. And the large scale solar energy systems are not allowed anywhere in town in this table. The difference between the version that you saw the last time, uh, and this one is that we added an allowed use column for the medium scale ground mounted. Solar energy systems, just to be clear, I mean, sorry, roof mounted solar energy systems, just to be clear that there's a distinction, policy distinction in town between. Brown mounted and blue mounted systems, so the roof matter ones are easier than the. Bring mine once permitting less. Questions? From that? All right, I'm gonna just keep following through and you guys can stop me as I go. Feel free to interject if I'm blazing over anything or. Um, so that this version of the, um, this final version of the proposed warrant article, we also took another look at height. Uh, um, standards for solar energy systems. And in this version, we made a change from the last one where, um, the last one that really the the roof mounted solar energy systems were literally treated like a, like a antenna or chimney. But there really was no height restrictions, get some good comments about that. Uh, so we made some tweaks to the language, which basically, um, wants solar, wants the roof mounted solar energy systems to really be a flat on the roof. Um, but in any case, and if you're on like a flat roof, there's still a provision that you can be elevated. But in no case or any of that's the the roof matter one's supposed to be higher than what the height standards are in the zone. With a minor exception that we did include a provision in that language. That's very similar to the type standards, which allows conditional use of durable or heights to be above that in certain situations, as long as it meets the. Condition news standards and doesn't, um, affect a view shed, basically. So it's sort of like, um, I don't know, I don't even know when the last time planning board, if ever, has granted a height. Increase above what was allowed, but that's just exactly the same language as what's already in the ordinance, so it's sort of treating it like a structure. Make sense?
So in 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 practical reality, we 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 are hoping that roof systems will be flush mounted.
Yep.
If they are propped up to get an appropriate sun catcher, they can't be higher than the. The structure allowance height of that particular structure. Um, and what we're really with the other language about exceptional cases and have, it's really focused on like, maybe there are big, um, block with buildings. That might want to put, you obviously got to tilt those. Um, and and putting something on top of those is probably not gonna, may not affect anyone else's view. So there should be some allowance to if there's a situation like that in town. You obviously think of a school, but frankly, I think the school has already long ago decided that the roof in its current form can't support. A big installation, but but if it were something like the school, um, there would be a provision that would allow the the planning board to consider. Giving them the right to put the panels up.
Would hot water, uh, solar systems just kind of be in the same category as this? It is. I haven't seen the sun's power. They're they're very similar. People seem, don't seem to use them as much as they used to, but.
No, solar collectors defined as a solar PV cell panel or array or solo or solar thermal collector. That relies upon solar radiation as an energy source, the generation of electricity or the transfer of stored heat. So the answer in that definition is yes.
Yes. I concur.
Yes. Um, the other thing we did for height was, um, there's the ground, there are medium scale ground mounted so or any ground mounted solar energy systems. Uh, in a previous version, there was an allowance for that to be, um, I think it was between twelve and, um, twenty two feet high. And in this version, we've just limited it to fifteen feet. If there was some concern that, um, the scale of a ground mounted solar energy system at twenty two feet is like a pretty good sized building height. And, um, maybe we want to start off with just making it as a simple, um, height. And so rather than stick to the twelve, we just bumped it up to fifteen, give a little bit of flexibility for the tilt. Um, so that that that's an adjustment that we made as well. And and the genesis of the last version was really like, this is what the model ordinances say about, you know, the variations of some solar energy systems. But there are other towns which have limited that height of those ground mounted systems also, so it's pretty individual decision. So that's height, that's what's changed on height. Um, we also made some clarifications to, um, one of the standards for small scale systems, which address visual impacts. I think that's six B twenty three, uh, three E, which is on page four, anybody who prepares, um, to look at it right now. Um, that really, um, just adds. In in a previous discussions, we've been trying to figure out like. In the model ordinance, it actually, um, in the model ordinances we looked at, some of the language requires. Um, solar energy, small scale solar energy systems to be set at like basically inside yards or rear yards. And so the Tana Mount Desert doesn't have a definition of like, and and not allowed in a front yard. So the town doesn't have a definition of front yard or side yard or rear yard, so it's hard to describe limitations in sort of front yards. And in the land use committee, I think that the conversation really revolved around what we really need to provide some flexibility for people to cite. These small scales, solar energy systems where they're going to work, but be recognizing that there may be some visual impacts that we need to get mitigated from that. And so this change, uh, basically clarified some, I thought, kind of confusing language that we had created before. Um, to allow those systems to be set appropriately and require, um, some visual impact mitigation measures. You know, screening or, um, you know, reasonable mitigation.
So we had a conversation about, uh, by not allowing things in the front yard, you're basically trying to protect people who are driving by from having to look at solar panels. And why is that any higher priority than trying to protect maybe next door neighbors? From the visual impact of the solar panels, when you could accomplish both. Um, in addition to the problem of what's, and I kept using my house as an example, like exactly where is the front and the back and side of my house? And, um, and it isn't at all clear. Um, but also you could accomplish this, but the protection of neighbors. Views as well as the road by just requiring it to. And we'd have to, it'd have to be. Yeah, people would have to demonstrate that they're doing a reasonable amount, they're not gonna make it disappear, they're not gonna make it be invisible. But how can you minimize the impact?
Yep, and I think with the approach that this, the language is not like super specific, but it requires that kind of thing, so. As with many things here, we may have to test the waters and see how people dive into that and whether or not we need to make some tweaks to be more clear. But I think it'll work that for now. Um, the other thing we, just to make a clarifying, um, change under section four of this, this, uh, these standards. Um, to make it clear that it was given the ground, medium scale ground mounted solar energy systems, so I don't think the last version was very clear that. Like all solar energy systems can be medium scale, but these standards that require conditional use approval really are. For the ground medium scale system, so this just clarifies that. And we also added, um, some additional language about, uh, when you come to get a conditional use approval, the applicant needs to have a decommissioning plan that they present. Um, and then we also added some visual impact standards to that as well. Uh, but when I say standards, it's pretty much the same language as the one that we just talked about, so that's what she looking for.
You should have a compatibility standard.
Well, hopefully. It's there. You have.
Let's not go there. That's twenty twenty six.
Mm hmm.
Um, and then, uh, lastly, uh, we just changed the organizational structure. Um, at one point we had two separate sections, one dealing with, um, abandonment and dealing with removal. And we just kind of combined those two into one section and we, um, made it, I think, a little clearer that. You know, all solar energy systems have to follow a certain sense there is when they need to be removed and then, um, the abandoned piece.
Actually, it's all ground mounted.
Yes.
Systems need to be removed and it it doesn't, it doesn't. It makes it clear that both a small and medium have to be removed when they become. And we've punted on the roof mounted stuff because, again, the priority is to make sure that something that's fairly industrial looking, it doesn't remain in the landscape as opposed to on someone's roof. Where it's probably gonna be fairly non intrusive in most cases. And eventually someone may have to take it off because they've got to redo their roof. So, um, we elected to not regulate that, the removal of those, but both small and medium. Installations that are ground mounted need to go away when they're done being useful. We think of it as the satellite dish provision of the ordinance, right?
So that's a summary. Happy to answer questions.
How much is this, uh, varied with the state regulations now?
Um, I think that this, a lot of the state regulations are based on the same type of thing. So we used, uh, like a lot of model ordinances that are very consistent around the different communities in the state. And so it's, these are pretty consistent standards in a lot of places we've looked. Okay, yep. And we were sort of like, not really getting deep dive into, you know, these are the, there's like a. There are structural standards or some other things that, you know, installers have to follow based on state rules. Those aren't necessary, those are, not all of those are in this ordinance. Like, I think there there is a, um, installation requirement in state law that you have to leave a certain area around the edge of your roof. When you do a roof mounted one, um, there's like a distance off the roof that you have to be. Um, there's a bunch of others of those like that called code compliance standards that we don't typically put. All of those in the ordinance, so we didn't do a lot of that. I actually like the idea of not doing that because it's hard to, sometimes it's hard to keep up locally with some of those standards and it's good, I think, sometimes.
Same life safety anyways, too.
Yeah.
If somebody wanted to go over two acres, would they get a variance on that or is there? I'm thinking that because there was some talk about covering the parking lot. For the Cranberry Isles.
Yep.
And put a solar array on that. And that seems like that could be somewhat near that size.
There is no variance provision for large scale solar energy systems.
Okay.
Not allowed.
Fair.
Yep, they were specifically not allowed. Now, for now.
So if this were to pass and make it to vote, the town votes it in place, then. Are we gonna be the first town on the island with a solar ordinance or?
My.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Trent's working on a range.
Trent's working on one.
I see that in the legislation they're talking, there's someone bringing up a, um. An item maybe to do with decommissioning. Solar panels.
Yeah, let's check it out. Um, in a lot of towns I go to, that seems to be the biggest thing.
Yeah.
Some environmental concerns with decommissioning. Yeah.
Well, we specify that the decommissioning has to comply with all.
Yep.
Regulations, state.
Yeah, I mean, I wouldn't say this is a, we didn't like take. Obviously, I think this is sort of tailored to the, what the appetite might be for this town. That being said, if a large scale one comes along, that might make sense, there are opportunities to come before the board and try to get a zone change. Or an amendment to the, not a zone change, but an amendment to the ordinance.
This is a little off topic, but, uh, what are our stance of, uh, windmills?
What is our stance on?
Yeah, I know, that's a whole different topic that I don't necessarily want.
You don't have.
Yeah. So currently, there is no stance.
Wireless communication, so.
I know, but, uh, on Beach Hill Road, uh, the farm up there has one.
Yep.
That was approved by the.
Yeah.
I'm doing what I can think of.
Yep. Maybe something to look into, I don't know, we haven't gotten that. Or, yeah.
All righty. Any further discussion and comments from the public?
Is is there public? No. No.
Negative. Did the size, um, you know, less than fifteen thousand square feet, where where do those numbers come from?
Those came, yeah, right from the model ordinance as we looked at. Yep.
Well, that's a third of an acre. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I wouldn't want to be in danger.
Yeah.
Personally, and then the other one is section two acres.
Yeah.
Yeah, we. The research that we did, there was a lot, so we, the genesis of this whole thing came from the sustainability committee. Um, and then, and and it's a good thing to do because I think it's normal that any symptom that you're gonna have to tackle. Plus, the town is interested in doing some projects for more sustainability reasons, that's just great. Um, so we took their model and originally the the idea was to just make this a separate ordinance. But it really doesn't fit in the context of how we do this kind of project, it wouldn't really be its own ordinance, so it's got to fit into the. So we, we took that and then did some more research and, you know, that, the stuff that they sent through, um, climate to drive, did a bunch of work on it, which was great. And they used, um, a lot of, uh, the models primarily Maine out of the one, basically wrote the kind of guidebook. Um, for how to adopt, you know, how you think about solar ordinances in Maine, that they have a few different versions that need to be tweaked a little bit for this town. But, you know, some, some towns would require site plan review, which you don't have. Um, it's, there's some other things to to consider, so it's pretty standard. And then you can look at other towns and it's all, they're all, uh, slight variation of this.
Yeah.
So I was under the, um, my goal on this one was not being a total expert on solar stuff, like just try not to reinvent the wheel. Yeah. I have much more expertise in other areas, I mean, just, but this one was a new one.
You guys think? The most.
Mm hmm.
Maybe a motion then to recommend it to the. Warrant committee?
Uh, I think it's, you guys recommend passage.
Yeah.
There you go.
I won't do it because I shit the loser, but.
What do you think, Alan?
I would like to make a motion to, uh, pass this as as written.
Recommend for.
Recommend.
I recommend.
A second.
All right, any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Aye, opposed? There you go.
That's it, that's this year.
Fantastic, thank you for all the great work.
I'm gonna see you.
Yep. We're all paddling the same canoe here.
So we are, I mean, uh, all like at the floor just a little bit, we are getting ready to sort of work on our work plan for. It was over twenty twenty six, twenty five, twenty six.
All right.
So if there are things, as you guys have time, if there are land use things that we need to put on the list, that would be, would be really helpful to. Brainstorm about that, we don't, not necessarily technically, but I'm gonna put it in the queue.
What do we have, what's the date of the next news on the?
It's the seventh.
Nineteenth. Is it the eighteenth?
The third Tuesday, whatever the.
That would be the eighteenth, and there's also a warrant coming in that night.
Yeah, so we, yeah, you have a six.
Okay.
By the way, I knew you were doing that, so.
Okay. Great. Thank you, we're just gonna do work plan.
Yeah, yeah.
So, um, I can tell you some things I think we're gonna be working on based on stuff we've been saying in the past, and then it would be great for you guys to stay on it, but. Uh, one of them is really taking a, continuing a look at the allowed uses table. To maybe restructure it a little bit so that it encapsulates more, um, brought. I don't know, if more uses, but it's, um, maybe a better way to think about the allowed uses table as opposed to having it, you know, broken down by like residential. Um, whatever it is, whatever those little categories are sometimes create confusion, at least as a user and or regulator. And so we we've spent a little bit of time already kind of rethinking that and how that might work, so that's probably a conversation we should have. However, the subdivision ordinance shakes out, I think that's gonna be a big part of that. We still need to work on, um, I think I alluded to this last time, but, um, we should take another look at mobile home parks and those standards. Um, at some point in the future, I'd love to have a good conversation about, you know, conditional news versus site cleaning review and how we want to think about that, particularly in the context of. Making like apartment buildings and multi unit structures really should be a site plan review. And not necessarily a subdivision review because, you know, we're looking at kind of different set of standards. I mean. When you do like an apartment building, the things that you're looking at are a little different than if you're dividing a land, which is what the subdivision rules really are geared toward. Um, I will also say that there is some discussion in the legislature about changing the definition of subdivision from three lots to five, which will be kind of interesting. Um.
There's lots of dwelling in it, so.
I had to read this aid language, but I just had this conversation today, I think it would be awesome if it were going in this, and then lots. And then lots kind of go up in the air.
Your applications would be nice.
Yeah, we're gonna start working on that, I have a meeting starting on Monday, and that's one of the first things we're gonna be doing, so applicants on, it's on the list.
Coastal bluff zones in the shoreline zone.
In what context?
Like, is there any mention or? Integration into Luso about those, cause we seem to be running into those. Yeah, like there's, there, there's mapping of it, but I, like, it, it doesn't seem like it's. Present in Luso, like we keep running into these properties that have these. These zones on them and then, you know, the setback changes because of that.
Yeah. Yep.
Yeah, you measure differently.
Yeah. Yeah, and we, and we identify it through the, the surveying process and they're going and looking at the mapping of these areas, but. Like if we, I don't know, it's kind of a planning thing and land use planning.
I have coastal maps.
Yeah.
The coastal maps and they're all in our GIS stuff.
Like some client, uh, I mean, the, they're not even aware that exists, I mean, we weren't aware it existed until we started. Running into it.
Yep. Yeah, we, I could take a look through the rules.
There are not a ton here, but there are some.
Yeah.
Yep, I don't think that there's been a huge amount of shoreline zoning. Changes, but we could take another look at that and see if we need to make any tweaks, so I think we're usually pretty good about that.
I think we just have to think about adding height on our operating structures. Where the states allow the additional three feet.
Yes.
Have that as a Luso. That I'm aware of, it's changed.
Roof Management Act might be changing, but not before we've already started our complaint, so that's. Good or bad, depending on how you feel about the roof management act. That's complaint legislative, uh. The legislation that. Yeah, government's complaints is the government action act. And there's like a set of rules, you have the problem, they're, they're spending a lot of time in my circles arguing about how they change to that. Cause it can be a bear. Yeah, anything else? I mean, I'm sure we'll go over some stuff, but. Those are the big things I think, right?
Yes, and I think, um, practically speaking, we're gonna have to figure out a more effective way to go for the land use stuff, because this. Line by line thing was, I think it's really important for people to digest it all. I don't know how to shortcut that, but I think it was putting people asleep.
Yeah, I don't know.
I just feel it's been long enough, we may even have to start over.
Yep.
Unfortunately.
That, though I will, I mean, I've been through this a few other times and I, that's gonna be a conversation that we may wanna. Do here as well, but like, when you're going through the allowed uses table, you, you, you're going to have to go through the allowed uses table, like.
Line by line.
It's a.
With the definitions.
Here's the list of allowed uses, so what we've done basically is. Come up with a comprehensive list of allowed uses and really kind of compared it to the one that we have already. And s- to see which ones you wanna add, and, and so in the, in the law. You know, the way that we should be approaching it probably is things that aren't in the allowed uses table just aren't allowed, like there's a reason why they're not there. So we wanna be pretty careful about, you know, going through that table and making sure that we get everything that we want. So then there's that, but, and then you have to ask the same question as you're going through, okay, well now what zone, what land use district do we want this thing to be allowed in? And so I don't know, I mean, I'm all about efficiencies when it comes to that stuff, but it's, the thing about it is. It would be easy enough for me to go and say, here's what you should do, and if you don't look at it, somebody's gonna pick up on something, and we just need to. Go through it and make sure everybody's on the same page. Or not do it at all.
Well, yeah, no, I mean, I just wonder if maybe it would require. A couple of us going through, doing the matching process with the, with the, with the current and the new.
Yep.
And, and then extract from that what's different and what actually people need to think about. And make decisions about in terms of zones, cause we.
Yep.
We didn't even begin the process of zones, we were just going through and getting acquainted, I don't think people spend enough time actually getting acquainted with the definitions.
Yeah.
So anyway, that's something we'll have to. I think we need to shorten the shoreline zone too.
Shorten it in the map.
Two fifty on the map.
Well, we could look at that too.
That's gonna be a big project, but that's something we've been talking for years about doing, checking the zoning map to make sure the zones make sense and.
I think that would be helpful. I mean, that question would be really helpful, do, uh, do the current. Zones make sense, like do we need to change the zones around?
But that's.
Hopefully those, those, that's like an overlap.
If only we could get the loser to meet twice a month and not take all some of them. The, the shoreline, you know, the light are now and our GIS. Is more consistent and it's more accurate, so like zoning now is gonna push inland shoreline more so. And some lots are gonna become shoreline zone that weren't shoreline zone. That would have been after we had that map. Change too.
That requires a.
That's a big one.
Yep.
Feel free to encourage people to volunteer to join them. Need more bodies and brains on it.
But just talked about that, it might handle a report.
Join the boards.
Mm-hmm.
I did too.
You guys are, I mean, all in all, Chris Donnigh's experience is a very engaged community, so good job. Uh, yeah, lots of good work to do. Great.
Alright.
Thanks.
Thanks, Noel. Does that cover item four other? And the update from the land use zoning ordinance advisory group?
Just got it.
I see like three names of that committee reference, the Luso committee, the land use advisor. It was advisory board and then advisory group.
It's a committee.
It's a.
It's land use, it's not a board.
It's not a board.
It's the land use advisory committee. And, but I will say the website says land use advisory group, which is why I, that's what I refer to it as.
Yeah.
I don't know if there's what the difference between group and.
You just. But can just read between the website. Whatever the select board adopted, it would now.
Yeah, I don't have it with me, but that's my own notebook. Or maybe it's in my document.
So we're all set, that was the update. Well, there's only one more item on the agenda then.
Would you like a motion to adjourn?
I think so.
And make a motion to adjourn?
Land use advisory committee. I'll second the one to adjourn.
Alright, all those in favor? Committee.
Yes.